All right, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. So now is the time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda.
Hello, I'm Jamie Domnick, just want to take a quick opportunity, so I'm president of Main Street, and wanted to introduce Regan Harnigan, who is the new director for the combined Main Street and Chamber Program, so just wanted to have a good chance to introduce her.
Are we live now? Hi, everyone, I'm Regan Harnigan, as Jamie said, the new executive director for the Main Street and Chamber, born and raised in Green County, so excited to be back and taking a part here, so if you ever need anything at all, be sure to reach out to me, and looking forward to working with you. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll give you your board. Anyone else? All right, none, we'll move on to consent items.
Prove.
Second.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Zamalek.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
New business item A, public hearing for the CDBG upper story housing conversion application.
Hi, good evening. This public hearing is for the second story housing application that has been proposed to the city, and I'd like to start off by making sure, were there any comments received, Roxanne? Okay, then what this is going to do is basically go through the basics, a few points that we need to make sure are made as part of the application process, and answer any questions that you may have. There was a housing needs assessment done a few years back, and part of this is to talk about some of your goals, so I went back and looked through those, and just kind of put a couple of them down on there, and the main goals for the low to moderate income people of your town were to create new job opportunities for them, to acquire some housing rehabilitation funds, to preserve their existing housing units, which of course you just completed that CDBG grant application, and we're just closing that out, and to provide some new affordable workforce housing options, which of course we've got going on the northeast corner of town, so that left you with more rental options, so this falls right into your plan over the years. Your potential activities would be targeted at upper story housing, and continuing to work on blight properties, and improve your rental properties through your step, and that's the housing needs assessment that we will put into this. This project right here would create five new rental units between the two buildings located at 200 East State Street and 116 North Wilson Street. The project would be funded through a variety of sources, one of those being a $500,000 CDBG grant, which would go towards a major portion of the funding. All of the funds received through the Community Development Block Grant would facilitate and help people at 80% of your area median income or below. Okay? There will be no people displaced through this project, because none are currently living there, and none of the businesses below would be affected by any workplace or lead safe work practices going on. So those are the points that we needed to make sure were discussed to meet the requirements of the grant application, and I believe we've got Chris and Nick here, if there's any questions that I can't answer, so are there any questions about the application or comments?
I think it's kind of asking, but still think it's kind of asking, I think it's a good thing for to have these apartments, so I'm glad that this is moving forward.
Yes, I think it's a good partnership all around, and your downtown, as we move throughout the state, and I go to various functions, and while they're now more of a resume, Jefferson is one of the talked about downtowns, so kudos to everybody involved in that. Anything else? All right, thank you for your time.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Zamalek.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item C, consider the first reading of ordinance amending zoning regulations to allow dwelling at... Oh, excuse me, public hearing on proposed zoning amendment to allow dwelling units on upper levels of building in the CBC district as permitted use.
So this would be a follow-up to the upper story grant, as well, you've got to have zoning that's appropriately in place, and allows for those upper story living units, P&amp;Z Hill to meeting, and they're recommending to allow that as a permitted use.
I move to approve. Second.
Oh, closing, Matt.
Closing. Okay. I move to close the public hearing. Yes.
Zamalek.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Now we'll consider the first reading of ordinance amending zoning regulations to allow dwelling units on upper levels of buildings in the CBC district as permitted use.
Only thing additional I would add is I would ask that we waive second and third readings, so that this can be approved and adopted before the CDBG upper story application deadline in July 31st.
I move we waive the second and the...
Go ahead with the first, and I'll do the second.
I move we consider the first reading, and that we...
Well, we just did that, we just did the first reading, and then the second.
Okay. I'll second.
Zamalek.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Now we ask to review a motion to write second and third reading.
I move that we waive the second and third readings of this ordinance.
I'll second.
Zamalek.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
And finally, just do a motion to finally adopt the ordinance, and I'd like to pray to officially...
We'll adopt the ordinance. I'll second.
Okay. Zamalek.
Aye.
Weetrick.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item D, public hearing on detailed plans and specifications, form, contract, and estimate of cost for the Arch Alley and City Hall parking improvement project.
So this project is reconstruction of the alley, just behind City Hall here, it's been called the Arch Alley, that's where the arches and arches will be in place, includes removal of the concrete from the alley, from the alley from the sidewalk on the square down to the east-west alley, as the base, the base bid, and then there was an alternate bid for the City Hall parking lot behind City Hall here to pay for that. The engineer's estimate was $38,297 for the alley portion, and $74,470 for the parking lot.
These are listed on...
These are specific... Correct. First grant goes to public hearing, and then approved plans and...
So it said, voucher is the lowest bid, but if you put them both together, isn't it a parry?
We haven't got there yet, but this is a public hearing on plans and specifications.
Question?
If I may, if memory serves, when you originally talked about doing the base project versus the parking lot project, that you could not exceed a certain amount unless you got leftover funds from the shared use path projects, they could kind of cobble together with the estimate for the alleyway parking lot project, did that come to fruition then, or?
That's how I would bid, yes.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure that was still in play there. Okay, thank you.
So these don't have to be together, we could have one do one, and one do the other?
No, they have to be together, they were, they will be, they were bid, plans were put together, and bid as a base bid plus an alternate, and the selection will be based on the low bid for the base bid. For the reason that Coltrane just mentioned, that without, in the case there wasn't enough funds to do both, we want to make sure that we're doing the Arch Alley for sure.
You have a question?
I just want to verify that this is only the parking back to the alley, is it that whole extra grassy place too?
Right, all that, right, all that parking behind City Hall includes the grass area.
So big parking lot.
Right.
How many cars, about, what, 18 cars or so?
Yeah, I believe there was about 18 installed or so there.
Thank you.
I move to close the hearing. Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item A, first reading of ordinance adding chapter 48 in noise control. So we sent this back to the police... 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 So we sent this back to the police...
...and special exception. We went in front of the Board of Adjustment what this 75-foot monopole tower does. It allows the Lion to communicate with the substation so if power goes out, they don't rely on somebody to do a telephone call. So if it happens in the middle of the night and you don't know it, you don't wake up and the power's still. It also allows them to communicate with their automatic metering system as well. Board of Adjustment reviewed it and approved the variance. This is Rich Kowinder with Lion Energy if you have any additional questions. And if you were wondering, the tower that they're within that half-mile of is Jefferson Telecom's. Spoke with Jefferson Telecom and they're okay with this.
The Board has provided that whenever the Board of Adjustment and all the areas comes to the council for review, really the only option you have is you can send it back to the Board of Adjustment if you want to for further consideration. Sometimes I guess you could just simply approve it just to show that you looked at it. Nothing wrong with the variance.
So that tower stays up. What could it be used for? What would be a purpose that it could be used for and still meet the FCC?
Well, it's realistically up to FCC to say what they can put on there and can't put on there. And that's kind of a safeguard and it's in there for the existing tower that they'll be vacating.
But any other use of it would have to be approved by the FCC, just the way it stands right now?
Yes.
If we approve this? Yeah, for adoption.
Well, Board of Adjustment approved it and like Bob said, if you don't approve it, it goes back to Board of Adjustment.
Right, right. I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item G, consider approval of work order number four for professional services for airport runway extension.
So this is the... This is an agreement between the City of Jefferson and Boltman Bank for engineering services related to the AGIS As-Built Approach Development. It is part of what is required with the runway extension and approach relocation because we're shifting that 100 feet north. We have to do some as-built survey work. This part covers our engineering fees. There's also costs through the FAA that are already in the overall funds that are being allocated through that supplemental funding. And is the 100% paid portion. This is in that as well, but it is an agreement between us and the city for those services.
I know you just said it, but just to confirm again, this is all we get reimbursed on this?
Yes, yes. This is part of the 100% supplemental funds that we received through the FAA.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Sloan.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Item H, consider approval of work order number five for professional services for airport runway.
So this is the same type. This is a couple of items that we have to do that it involves the NAV AIDS on the airport, the PAPs and Reels. This $8,000 agreement is for our services to work with the FAA on flight check for the NAV AIDS and then also decommissioning of the Reels. So that the FAA actually completes those tasks. But we're coordinating with them and working with them to get that stuff done. This too is also all included in the supplemental funding that was received as part of the grant through the FAA and is 100% paid for.
I move to approve.
Second.
Sloan.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Item I, consider approval to accept $30,000 grant from FAA through Coronavirus Aid Relief Economic Security Acts.
Well, the FAA has had some money they'd like to give away for for their coronavirus. And we can use it for about any sort of need out of there. They just contacted us and said, please help us out. So this is my agreement.
Time to enter into get that grant money. No stipulations or strings or anything whatsoever?
Nope.
I move to approve to accept free money?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item J, consider resolution proposing sale of property at 200 East State Street and setting public hearing.
So, kind of coming full circle here between upper story and living and the city's investment that they've put in, City View on State. We've got it to the point where we have a developer that's willing to purchase it. To, in order to get a fair market value on that, we hired an appraiser, that's a third-party appraiser. In fact, when he spoke to me, he asked me, "How much do you think it should be worth?" And I said, "That's what you're hired for." So we can get a good and accurate representation. That property came in at about $205,000. And that's once the gravitate space is completed. What we need to do is set a public hearing for the sale of that property. The sale would be for $205,000. And then additionally, Bob, correct me, on the backside, there would be an economic development agreement with the developer for $150,000. That would be points towards the second story or upper story grant. And it would be a 10-year forgivable loan, much like we've done with other businesses down the town. What we will additionally do is work up a fair market value of what both those leases are worth at the time of sale. Because there is value in having leased space. And that will be included in the purchase amount and we will have that prepared by the public hearing. Anything to add, Bob? And we'd want to set this hearing for the next next meeting. I move we set this public hearing.
Second.
One question real quick. Would the idea then be that you would automatically, well not automatically, but approve after the public hearing just so they can get the grant application in with that part included by the end of the month? Is that the idea? Okay, alright. Thank you. Right, submit that along with the grant. Okay.
The one thing I guess we should make sure everybody's aware of, if we do not get the $500,000 grant, the purchase will not occur. The city would still own the property.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Item K, first reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 48 Noise Control. So we sent this back to the Police Committee with, I believe it was two meetings ago that we had heard from the public and had some concerns in there. And we went back and discussed it and have made some changes. We did put that out. So some of the changes were concerns about the snow removal equipment, that some people will be out earlier than what we had had in there. So we just did away with that language of times that you can be out, that if it's a snow emergency, which is half-inch of snow or more, go out there and remove your snow. We realize you're going to get up earlier than some people. Go get it taken care of. I don't see that's going to be a major issue, but we did hear you on that. And the engine testing and repair, we completely took that off of there. We still have a lot of complaints of race car engine noises and stuff like that. And there's really little that people can do if if they're deciding to just keep revving that thing up over and over. It's becoming a nuisance. So we did not provide a measure in there to allow that to happen. We also did include, now we went beyond, above and beyond on this because we couldn't really find any ordinances that addressed children. But I know people were concerned about children, that their kids were not going to be able to go out and play in public and that neighbors are going to call the cops and you're going to get a misdemeanor. That's not at all, before we added this, that's not at all what this is intended for. And I do get the fear of the decibel levels and things like that. This is to be used as a tool. And even if you have a neighbor that decides they're going to call and complain, there's going to be officer discretion. It's going to be like, listen, these kids are out there playing, normal. I have four of the loudest kids in town. There's no way I would support an ordinance that's going to get me a misdemeanor ticket because they're out playing on the trampoline or something of that nature. So we did put in there that children at play, the sound of unamplified voices of children under the age of 16 at normal play. I mean, I really think that was unnecessary. I couldn't find it in anybody else's, but if it makes the public feel better that it's written down, that we're not going to come down there and give you a ticket because your children are outside playing. It was hard for us to address every single thing that we could dream of as a possibility. Where we do have to trust in our law enforcement to use their discretion of knowing what is a true follow this, a true noise disturbance. We don't have a lot of them. This is just a tool to help us if we do have it. But your kids are, your kids are fine to go out and play. Your snow removal is all fine to go out and do. I know people still bring up their concern for their vehicles, you know, your Harley-Davidson motorcycles, your big diesel trucks, your big gas trucks, your muscle cars, all that stuff. This doesn't talk in great lengths on that. Once your vehicle's out on the road, right now today, if you have a Harley-Davidson that it's modified beyond stock, which many of them are, I'd say most of them are, there's a state statute that we can write you a ticket for that. The reason why you don't see that is because that's not what we're spending our time to go out and do is chase down, you know, Brian, you're riding your motorcycle. We're going to come give you a ticket for it being too loud. That's not it. Now, say you're uptown doing burnouts with a big diesel truck and it's loud. Could they tag that ticket on there for noise ordinance? I'm sure they could, but we're not, we're not looking for your vehicles. We've already got that covered by the state. Once it's out on the, on the, now where this may apply is if you spend an hour a day out there high-revving your vehicle in your driveway for no other reason than just to not be a good neighbor. Now this is where the noise ordinance can come in and we could say, hey, you know, your neighbors are complaining. It's really bothering them. Could you, could you, you know, keep it to a minimum or work something out with them? Because as it sits today, if your neighbor's up partying, 2:00 in the morning, music's blaring, I see in the the police beat that there's people lighting fireworks off late at night. You know, those sorts of things. Now that's where a noise ordinance could step in. How I'd like to see the noise ordinance handled is somebody has a complaint, the officer steps in and talks to them, because it can be difficult for neighbors to be like, hey, you know, this is really bothering me. But come down there, law enforcement says, listen, you know, it's late, it's 2:00 in the morning, your music is very loud. Could you please turn it down? And they have two options. They can say, yeah, I'm sorry, you know, just was having fun. We'll turn it down. Or they could say no. And that's where we could, we could use this, this ordinance. We could put it into its full effect if we chose to. But as far as you're outside talking, having a barbecue, and even if, if, I would like to think that if a neighbor just wants to pick at you and call in, call in and call in, that the officer does have some discretion to have a conversation with that person and say, listen, you've called us this many times. They're not violating anything. You need to stop calling us for this reason. This is not appropriate. This is not what the noise ordinance is for. But, you know, we've, we've looked at changing the times on the ordinance and, you know, all the, all the ordinances that we looked at, there's a wide range. We can find where they're stricter. There's more, more to it. The decibels are lower. We found some that the decibels are higher. But it's so hard to be able to tweak it to fit every single scenario we can possibly think of. But I, I feel very comfortable that this is a very normal run-of-the-mill noise ordinance that many, many, many towns across the state of Iowa have, something of this nature. And we had many people comment and their concerns and things like that. And I think, I think we've really landed on something that's, that's doable. And that's why we're comfortable with having the first reading of it. Is there anybody that's got questions, concerns on it that they'd like to come up to the podium and discuss? Come on up.
We've got problems in our neighborhood. We got drummer going day and, you know, right until after 10 o'clock at night sometimes. Sometimes there'll be people over there on the street and everything. We've called the police a number of times. They've warned him. They made him shut his door. And we're still getting the noise. What do we do? We just keep calling the police every time it happens?
Well, this, you'll be, you'll, you'll call him once and he'll be warned. If he keeps it up, then he can be issued a ticket.
Okay, he will guaranteed be issued a ticket then?
I won't say guaranteed, but he could be issued a ticket.
Alright.
I think it even goes so far as if he...
Musical instruments are exempt. The sound made by a drum, horn, reed, string instrument or other musical instrument between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. So they would be able to use those instruments between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. But after that, then our noise ordinance comes into effect. And if you're still having an issue at 9:01, if you're having an issue with it continuing to go on, that's where this is a tool that we can use to go down there and talk to them first. And say, listen, your neighbor's...
It's not your neighbor to talk.
Now, now they can tell us. We can go down there all day. You can call us every day. We can go down there and say, hey, you know, you need to really stop doing that, be a good neighbor, those sorts of things. And they can tell you, I'm sorry, but I'm going to continue to play it. And there's nothing we can do. We don't have a noise ordinance to protect you like that.
So you're an example of why this ordinance is necessary. Because right now, he's within his rights to make noise. The police are just advising him. But now he would be in violation of this ordinance if this passes.
Now we have a tool to enforce that.
Okay, thank you.
And we very much will, would like to go down there and talk to them, have them just stop rather than have to write a ticket. But yeah, this would give us a tool to handle a situation like that.
Okay. One more question. What about dogs that are barking at 7:00 in the morning?
We already have a dog, a dog barking. If dogs are barking, you can call the law enforcement center and we already have something to take care of that. That's, that's a complete separate, but we do, yeah, barking dogs. We can, we can handle that.
Good enough. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else want to speak on the noise ordinance question? Anything? Alright. We just need...
Most would put the noise control ordinance on first reading.
Second.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item L, consider approval of an amount not to exceed $35,000 for repair of well nine.
Well nine is the well over by the middle school at Monroe and Vine Street, is it? And it just failed on, it quit pumping efficiently. It's between seven and nine years old, which is life expectancy of a well. So they needed to have it pulled and looked at to see what they needed to do to fix it. And the estimate that they came back with was $26,986 on that one. So with council's approval, it's not budgeted. It comes out of capital capital expense for wells. That line item only has, I think, like $8,000 in it this year. So we need approval by the council to make that purchase.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Item N, consider approval of an amount not to exceed $40,000 for repair of well six.
Well six is the one behind the LEC. The difference between this one and the other one, the other one's a submersible pump. It pumps down inside. This one is, has a shaft that turns the pump. And the shaft corroded away and broke, well quit pumping. The reason, the price difference is $5,000 more, which we think will come in much less. But it's because it's, it's got driven by shaft instead of being submersible. So that one behind the LEC, we're asking for up to $40,000 to fix that well.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Thank you. Item N, consider approval of agreement with Computers Concepts for monthly service contract for City Hall computers.
Scotts, we got computer computers for the office. What we were trying to do is just to operate off the block time and type of materials that we needed. Found out that didn't work so well. So we bought these computers with some agreement. That was the thing. This is more long-term agreement. Gives us more access to pre-tech time. It's included in the price as they explain. The limit which you get charged for is anything new you bring into the system. So now we have more capability where they get charged per hour. This is called multiple technical questions. So they can, they can remove it and they change those rules.
So when we approve, when we approve the computers, the time period?
Like block time.
I...
Go ahead.
I move to approve this contract.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
Sloan.
Aye.
Wietrak.
Aye.
Sumalik.
Aye.
Item O, discussion of proposed policy for feral and stray cats. So I kind of want to start with the council talking a little bit first. And then we can go to some questions, concerns, statements from the audience. And I do know that, I want to clarify that what we have written down is basically some notes. It's, it's not a policy yet. It's just kind of ideas that we're keeping down, keeping on paper, keeping out in front of the public. And, and we're continuing to work on these things. And while it is notes, we do we do realize that there's some wording in there that leaves things up for interpretation. But the one thing I'll point out is from the very get-go when we started talking about this and we were meeting earlier is we're talking about humane treating these animals. Now, where it says, "Take them out of town," that refers to a barn cat program that we had talked about. It doesn't specifically say it here, but again, these are notes, ideas down on paper. So I know some people jumped to the conclusion that we were telling people to take cats and dump them out in the country. And that's, that's never been what we've been about. Yes, we do talk about humane euthanasia along with TNR and other things. We're trying to get something honed down that works for everybody because what doesn't work for everybody is groups of people throughout the community feeding 20, 30, 40 cats. Because then their neighbors, they do have to put up with that. And they don't all enjoy it. My garage, right now, a cat got in there and it smells like urine. And that cat that ran out of there, it smelled like rotting flesh. So I don't think it's in the best health. Also, I've had a child get bit by one of these cats, which creates a trip to the emergency room. And one of these cats wandering through the dog, my young pup, put his paw through three panes of glass, you know, six-inch cut up the arm, bleeding all over the house. Because cats are just wandering. So there, there needs to be a balance in there of what we do. And I understand people are passionate about being able to trap, release these, but the people that are feeding these cats share some responsibility in this because not everybody that lives around them enjoy them coming up on their deck and urinating. Not everybody that lives around these cat colonies enjoys them going to the bathroom in their garden, their flower bed. It's, it's not necessarily enjoyable for everybody. So we've got to keep that in mind. That it's not just the people that enjoy feeding these cats, but it's the people that live around them as well. So that's kind of where we're going and trying to get something that's going to work. And we're trying real hard to get something that's going to work for everybody. You know, we do run into problems where at our own animal shelter, there's, you can't bring us any cats. We don't have any room. Well, that's, that's a problem, you know. We're keeping cats in our animal shelter for two years, which I know we've been close. That, that's a problem. And you want to talk about ethical treatment of animals. You've got a cat that's in a room that you put your arms across the room and touch the walls. And it's probably about double the typical that length. You know, that's, that's not necessarily the best place for an animal to spend a good portion of its life either. So we're trying to work with everybody and we're trying to hopefully do that in a manner where it doesn't have to be a holy pulpit and have lawyers threatening us and all that stuff. We get it. You're passionate about what you do. But along, a lot goes, there's a lot to be said about having a conversation. And I think there's going to be some, some give and take on both sides. I, I don't think, you know, I got a letter today that said that they're demanding that we do TNR. Well, it's hard when you introduce the conversation, the first three lines, it's demanding. in the first three lines. It's demanding. Uh, that's not really having a conversation with us. And, and at, at no point are we asking people to go out and trap animals and just go euthanize them. We've talked all along that we need to figure out a system that we can get them to our animal shelter, get them checked for, are they feral? Do they have a chip? Does somebody own these? Because just like with dogs, we're not just catching dogs and taking them and having them euthanized. We're trying to find their owners if they have an owner. Um, so I think there's a, there's a lot of things that play into this. And, um, you know, we're, we're, we're just in discussion. We're not saying, hey, this is set in stone. This is what we're doing. We're just putting this out as we're having a continuing conversation. We're getting more people that are getting involved. But you guys can take her from there.
In the past, Bob said that we really need to do this in the open.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm just going to express my opinion. I think, like you said, it has to be a discussion. And for everyone else, this may be how you're seeing the sausage being made.
Mm-hmm.
And so it may not be exactly pretty, but I'm just going to give my opinion here. This is only my opinion. I am in favor of some form of TNR. I don't know if it'll work, but I think it is a viable alternative to doing nothing. Before I go on, I do think the cat problem could and should be solved with responsible pet ownership. People who do not spay, neuter, or have their pets under control are being irresponsible and they are the problem, period. I don't think cats have a right to roam. I also think that is an almost impossible solution to enforce. So besides TNR, along with rehoming to farmers that are willing to take cats, I'm not sure what else to do besides nothing. I called Dr. Mark Peters this morning. He requires anyone who wants to euthanize a cat or a dog to sign a consent form that they know it hasn't bitten anyone in the last 10 days. He can't remember the last time he euthanized a domestic animal that did not belong to anyone, if ever. His costs to euthanize an animal in a live trap include $45 to anesthetize an animal that is out of control, $45 to euthanize, and $60 to dispose of the body. I'm not sure what the cost to quarantine a dog or cat for 10 days is, but I don't think Dr. Peters is willing. And I have heard that the volunteers at PAWS would quit if they were expected to participate in euthanization, euthanasion of an animal who was not sick nor aggressive. Full disclosure, Dr. Peters is not in favor of TNR. His solution is to stop feeding cats and they will go away. Where? I'm, I'm not sure. In the meantime, they are breeding and acquiring all the health problems that a non-TNR cat would have. As I brought up a couple of months ago, some groups have already TNR'd about 50 cats in Jefferson last fall. The cost was about $25 to $60 a cat. They had some more grants in place, but COVID has dried that up. What happened to those 50 cats? Did they get sick? Become a nuisance and kill songbirds? Probably some. But the one thing they didn't do was make more cats. I would like to have as much knowledge as possible about the cat colonies we have. I would like the city to support TNR in at least some fashion and see the results over at least a two-year period. I was surprised that almost no stray cats have been trapped and euthanized by a licensed vet, at least. I would be against the city tacitly encouraging non-licensed people in killing domestic animals, especially since these animals would not be checked for microchips or rabies. If the city was going to spend funds for helping people euthanize and quarantine, I would support an equal amount to trying TNR. I am in favor in rehoming as many cats to farms as possible, but I would also like those cats to be spayed, so farmers would need more Jefferson cats in the future. Thanks.
Any other councilman got anything to say? All right. We'd open it up to comments. If you want to come up to the microphone, please.
Hi. Um, so we tried to do like a committee with Darren and Matt in the past. I mean, it just didn't go anywhere to do like the TNR. And I have a concern because in the policy that I read on Green County News Online, it looks like my neighbor who already doesn't like cats, if my cat gets outside, they can trap it and do whatever they want. My cat is microchipped. I have kids. Kids open doors, cats get out. I am definitely concerned about that. And I don't, I mean, what is, is that something that's going to happen? My cat gets outside, my neighbor traps it, you know?
See, that's right. I think if a cat's trapped, to take it to the animal shelter so it can be checked. We have the capabilities there, correct?
We do. Mm-hmm.
That, because...
Right. My kids would be devastated.
That happened. Their fair shake, being checked out, making sure they're, they're healthy. Um, that's what... You know, up until recently, I don't know how big a cat population is now, but I know COVID, a lot of cats, um, people are adopting them out. But up until then, we were told, we can't take your cats. Well, that's a, that's a problem, because we have to have somewhere for them to go. Um, and that's what I would prefer, is they get taken to the animal shelter, they get the treatment, and they get, they get looked at to see, do they have a, a tag and somebody, you know, because an owner's going to come looking for them.
Right. And I mean, we get so many voicemail calls about people missing their cats. I mean, if people are able to, neighbors can do whatever they want. I mean, this cat could be euthanized. And that's my neighbor's kid's cat, you know? Like, that's not cool.
Right.
I am against that. And I mean, I do feel like if the euthanasia gets passed, I, I know I'll be one of the people that definitely is not for that.
Right.
I am 100% for TNR. And I guess I don't understand why it hasn't even started yet. Like, I don't understand why everybody is opposed to it.
I don't know that it's necessarily proposed. Um, part of it, I know when we talked, there was, it was going to be difficult, because the vet that was here in town, and I realize we have one moving in, um, was absolutely, will have no part of it. Um, we did talk about, I don't, I don't know how long a TNR program, like if it's something you can do, like, um, a couple of weeks in July or August? Is it something that you can, like, target? All year round? Um, you know, so, yes, I, I think that's something we can do, is TNR.
I believe that, I mean, it's been shown in multiple studies that it works. TNR works.
But...
On, on the same side, do you, do you acknowledge that having cats roaming around schools didn't cause issues for people?
I have cats roaming around my neighborhood all the time and they don't cause issues.
Just, just in my case alone, a kid bit, dog goes through the window, and, uh, garage just smells like urine, a lot of chocolate scents. That's just mine. But I have a pretty big colony about...
Half a block away from me, you know? Um, and I, for, for every person that's here for TNR, there's another person out there that won't come up and speak on it, because they don't want a bunch of mail and stuff telling them how it's wrong. Because there are people that have, um, these cats under their deck or on their deck, or something that's just urinating. Um, and I know there's, there's things that the population can do with these things.
There's deterrence.
Off. And, um...
But at the same time, I mean, is it their responsibility to go out and purchase these extra items and maintain them? Because somebody feels they need to feed 30 cats. Um, you know, I do, I do think there's ownership in that when you're, you know that you're feeding all of the cats. Um, I do think there's some ownership to those cats. Um, and it's... Trying to find the middle ground to say that no cats have been euthanized, I mean, at, at the animal shelter.
Has there been cats that have been there for an extremely long time?
And I don't believe in euthanizing cats that have been there for a long period of time, because we've had animals that have been there for a year, two years, and then they get adopted out. You have to find the right person to come in and adopt them.
But unfortunately, when we have limited space, we've got to do something other than say, other than say, hey, we've got to turn this animal away. You're just going to have to leave the back of the streets, because we don't have room here to, to care for it. Um, you know, years ago, it was like...
Every second Thursday, Chuck comes and he come and got the animals. They only allowed so many. Um, and now we're to kill and euthanize. None of the animals unless they're vicious or they're sick. So I think there's...
Middle ground.
Somewhere there. But, you know, the stance that that mechanism is taking is, if we have to euthanize any animals, we're not doing this anymore. Um, which, at that point, the city will take it back over. Um, we currently pay somebody to help do that. Um, so we get...
The trouble we're running into is it's TNR, 100% TNR. It's our way or the highway. And the city has, it, there's no, there's no acknowledging that we have ordinances. There's no acknowledging that there are other people out there that don't enjoy it. So how do we figure how to do this?
I feel like we need to get together again, like we had in the past. I realized COVID, that's going to be a hardship. But I mean, I feel like you guys should...
We have...
With us.
We have...
I think that would be the best bet, that you guys come in, you know, talk to PAWS and we come up with some kind of solution or something. That's kind of...
Because I, I would love to see, you can only be feeding so many cats. I mean, this just haven't barrage of cats. I mean, it's, it's, some of these places are out of control with the cats that they have. And, um, and I, I, I know that's not an answer people like to hear. How can they be out of control with the cats that they have? That you can never have too many cats. Well, for people that they're damaging their property, there's too many. Um, so we can't just tell the people that are property owners, well, you're just going to have to deal with it, you know?
When you TNR'd, um, did, a big part of who helped you was the people that were feeding way too many cats, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, without them, I don't think you could have TNR'd those 50 cats, right? Because you had to put the cages on these people's property. They're not going to allow that if they think that this cat's going to be euthanized. I, I guess another thing is, not talking about the cats that are already in the shelter, but the cats that are part of this colony. You know, that's $150 plus whatever, you know, for quarantining them for 10 days. And like Mark said, he just doesn't have, people aren't doing it, or they're maybe not, you know, advertising what they're doing. That, that doesn't seem like there's a big groundswell of people that are live trapping cats right now.
No.
And so I guess what I'm saying, and once again, I, I don't know if TNR will work, but I'm just saying, what are the other alternatives? And it seems like it always comes down to TNR or something that's not viable, or doing what we have been doing, which is nothing. And so then they're still there.
Right.
I, TNR may not solve anything, but I don't think it's going to hurt anything either.
I totally agree. Right. Yeah. Yeah, I definitely think we should just all get together and talk. And that's about it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and council, can I bring that off a little bit? Does that bother anybody?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, because I'm about ready to pass out from not enough air.
Uh, my name is Tom Colvin. I'm the CEO of the Animal Rescue League of Iowa. And I came over here today because from the conversations that I heard from a couple of years ago, and certainly the conversations I've heard here tonight, I think you guys are most of the way towards coming up with a solution.
Mm-hmm.
That there's an interest there. There is a knowledge base that you're hungry for. And I think you've also seen how polarizing this issue can be for a community.
Mm-hmm.
When I heard you talk, mayor, about the, the, the noise ordinance, you're trying to get basically people to come together and be reasonable on things, right? And this whole cat issue is not one that happened to you overnight. There's always been cats here. There, and there was always been cats because whether they hauled them away, euthanized them, whatever, more came in, okay? Because there are, uh, uh, the, the resources are here, which is why we are adamantly against taking animals, any animals out in the country, is because you're taking them from known resources to no resources. And it's virtually the kiss of death, slow death from that. So, uh, that's why we advocated at the, the legislature to even strengthen those animal abandoned law, abandonment laws, which they did this year. You've got a lot of resources available. I think what, what my observation is, what you're lacking is one person or one task force, small group of people, to bring the accurate information to you, bring the accurate information to you, so that you can make decisions accordingly.
Mm-hmm.
You've got those folks. The Boone folks have been here. The APE folks have been here and made a considerable difference for you already. Um, I think it's just a matter of putting this all together. The Alley Cat Allies, who really helped the Animal Rescue League, uh, bring this together in the city of Des Moines. You can imagine, we guesstimated that the feral cat population in the city of Des Moines was some, somewhere around, I won't say feral, the feral and community cat program, and I think it's important the definitions happen here, uh, was somewhere around the 14,000 mark. Uh, now, capturing those cats and euthanizing those cats has been going on forever and did not work. Uh, and the city of, uh, the city council had a lot of concerns, but we brought to them the facts, how this works, how this has worked in other communities, and how this is a multi-pronged approach. And so basically what we did was we said, and I, I just heard, maybe let's try this for a while. We, we basically, the, the city of Des Moines put together an ordinance. Uh, they're kind of seeing how it works. Uh, it's working extremely well. I brought Megan Wheatman with me, who is our TNR coordinator. Basically what we did was she became that central person that could talk to those that didn't want cats on their property, uh, those that were feeding colonies, and getting those colonies to zero population growth. That's the key. Bringing them to zero population growth, okay? And, uh, so all of these things, I think you've got all the elements that, quite frankly, I'm not sure, uh, we had as much buy-in from the city of Des Moines right at the beginning that I see here. So I think it's just a matter of putting it all together. Nobody wants cats cruelly treated by the city, by the, by the citizens, uh, all of that. So this is a, this is a chance to actually bring everybody together. Mayor, I can't agree with you more that people cannot just come to you with a my way or the highway. It's got to be, how can we help the city succeed in doing this thing that, yeah, we are passionate about? We're passionate about it not only for the cats, but we're passionate about the whole TNR program, because we know it works. We know it works. We've seen it time and time and time again. There's places, particularly in the east, and we just, this just blew my mind with the number of cats that we were seeing at the Animal Rescue League that kept going up and up and up and up and up. And until we, we got into these types of programs, that's when the numbers started coming down. But there's places in the east that are actually transferring cats into them after being in a similar situation like Jefferson. So it can be done. And you've got a lot of people here for it, to help. So if there are questions, we can be, answer. If there are resources, we can help put together. I will tell you that the Animal Rescue League is very tied up with what we've got going right now, but you have resources that I mentioned before to help. We're here to help put things together. I know there's a lot of people here for you. Can I answer any questions?
If we get your contact information, that would be good.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Should I leave that here? Okay. I'll leave some here. And, uh, yeah, if we can get this maybe into a task force that can make those effective changes that I just heard they want to see, go from A to B to right on through, that's going to be your quickest way to go about it.
Yeah.
Okay? And most efficient. I really appreciate the time...
Yeah.
...to come and speak for you, okay? And I'll stick around in case there's further questions.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rick?
Tom? Yes?
How were, you were successful in, in persuading people not to feed cats, community cats?
No, what we were, what we were, because I'll tell you something else. The, the city of Des Moines is very unique and it's got 52 neighborhood associations, okay? And, and since we have the animal control contract, we wanted to get a feed feel from the city of what, how they looked at different issues, a number of different issues. And a big one was cats. So we went to 26 different neighborhood associations, the biggest ones. And every time the people said, we don't mind the cats in our neighborhood. We just don't wanna see all those unwanted kittens going around, cause they knew full well how vulnerable they were. They didn't wanna see them continue to grow. But every one of those, those neighborhood associations wasn't get those cats out of here. It's like, help us learn to live with them. Help manage those, those colonies. So I can't tell you it's a matter of saying, that's not our mission is to go out and say, stop feeding these cats. Uh, all due respect to the veterinarian, but I do not agree that if you don't feed them, they'll just disappear from Jefferson. They will go find other resources and some of those resources may be in even less desirable places than you want them to be where they are right now. Okay? So it is a matter of managing those, those people that are feeding the cats, helping them with resources. And the rest, the rest all just starts falling into place. Okay? I'll leave my cards here. Thank you.
Don't leave it with the media. We'll never get it back.
But I'm certainly glad to hear that taking them out, I was very alarmed and the, the KCCI called me on the way uh, about taking them out to the country and dumping them. Uh, that will get me
That, that was That was never part of the discussion. And I just, I just wanna be clear that from the start of this, we've been talking about how do we treat them? And a matter of fact, we were wanting to get going on things because we were worried about people going out and doing vigilante things, poisoning them, things like that. We don't want that stuff to happen. Um, we want to do it the right way. Um, and we are exploring all options. What you're saying sounds really good and I'd like to hear more about it. And if people could get ahold of us that have resources and wanna be part of a committee, get our groups going again and, and explore more on that. Um, I think that would be great, but I just wanna be on the record that the city of Jefferson is not supporting unethical treatment, the, the dumping them, any of that stuff. Um, I know that when stuff gets leaked to the media, um, you know, going to KCCI and Channel 13, those are good ways to get your, get your, your voice heard and get people, cause people on this issue are very passionate. But it's not always the most accurate. Um, you know, somebody could have just called and said, what do you mean about taking them out of town? Cause that, that could lead one to believe that we just say take them out of town and dump them.
Exactly. That's how I took it.
It was in the context of the, the barn cat program that we had discussed at several meetings. Um, but we just don't have that set up yet. None of us up here are policy writers. We're just, this is just notes on paper.
Yep.
Just to kinda keep the conversation going. And some of the things got pointed out that, hey, that's kind of a an open-ended statement that you made with the, um, take them out of town. What does that mean exactly? But, um, so it doesn't mean dump them.
No. So what is your feeling on, um, like I've had a farmer request up to maybe six cats about, you know, rehoming them to the country?
So the way I look at that, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, and, but what I would ask though is those cats that are sent out to the country, RT and R because we'd want to have continuing customers of these farmers.
Well, my incentive is the spaying and neutering is just, you know, that's, that's the best thing to do for it. Now, even that barn thing is not as, quite as simple as you might think of gathering up some cats, taking it out and they're gonna stay in the barn. They're, they're not gonna stay there. They have to be shown over a period of time that that's where their resources are gonna be. So even that comes with a process that we can talk about. We have a barn program too.
And so maybe kittens are better than older cats?
No, no, I, I, no. We'll talk, we'll talk. Okay. We'll, we'll work through, cause every part of this has a process. But I'll tell you, whether it's Animal Rescue League or APE, Alley Cat Allies, or Boone Area Humane Society, you've got a lot of expertise at your fingertips. Tons of expertise at your fingertips. Okay? Yeah. I'll leave these right here. Thank you again.
Hi, everybody. I am Vanessa Heenan. I am from the Boone Area Humane Society. Not my first time here. I recognize a few, a few of you. Um, basically I'm going to echo everything Tom just said, 100%. We are here to help. We are here to give advice. We are here for any resources we can spare. Um, yes, your, whatever was released might have been misleading, but we all know in the past, a lot of cats received bullets. That, that's what was happening.
Which has not happened since then.
Since then, but it was happening, is bottom line.
I see what they do with the release and that it's intended to grab headlines and get people wound up. But it's just not the truth. That's what I wanna point out. It's not the truth.
So currently, I am here, I guess now after hearing Tom, um, I have been in contact with a few of the people that work at your shelter. Um, I 100% agree with you. Cats should not be in the shelter. Um, we have very high adoption rates. Sorry, I have a migraine. It's affecting my body right now. Um, okay. We have very high adoption rates. We run a TNR program. We have a barn program. We've been no kill for four years now. It's very hard to keep up, um, with the amount of animals coming in. But we have resources. We have barn homes. We have foster homes. We have a lot of things that we can teach Paws. The problem is Paws doesn't have a director. Paws has a board. Um, I don't know many of the board members. I actually only know one personally. We've actually adopted to her. Um, so we have gotten to know each other pretty well. I have given her advice just within the past week or so. We are gonna be getting together, giving her resources, getting her animals adopted. Um, I've offered her help on the Facebook. I've offered, uh, social media help. Help taking pictures and getting these animals seen is the big thing. I just don't know exactly how everything works. I am a nonprofit. We own our own shelter. I don't have to answer to city council. I answer to my board, which is made up of 15 people also. I have gotten a lot of ordinances changed. I have been able to, um, get through to some of our board members on city council. This is the way to go. TNR is the only way. And I understand that you guys want to euthanize. Um, I will do everything in my power to offer resources and space in my shelter to keep that from happening. I understand you guys want instant results. That's what I heard last time I was here. You guys wanted to euthanize a certain percentage of cats that were trapped or whatever the case is. I don't wanna see 20% of your cats euthanized. Um, and I don't know who decides that or who thinks they should be able to decide that, but I don't feel personally that it's right. Um, kittens should not be released to barn homes. Um, they can be socialized. We do a lot of our medical treatments onsite at our shelter. It's very costly to take in sick cats. I'll be the first to admit it. Our operating budget has more than quadrupled since I became director. Because there's a right way and a wrong way to do it, we are a group of passionate people. We do spend a lot of money. We do a lot of educating. Um, I would suggest microchip clinic at the very least before you start trapping cats. Give these low, I don't know how to say that. Give your colony caretakers a chance to claim their cats. That way you can keep track of who has how many. That way you know who's registered to who. Um, APE I'm sure is willing to help with the spay and neuter. It is costly. And again, I'm gonna echo Tom. I don't agree with your vet. Some vets are old school. I think everybody just needs to have an open mind and follow who's already done this. Um, Alley Cat Allies, I am a feral friend. I answer calls from all over Iowa. I help people from all over. I travel hours to bring people traps, to give them resources, to help them trap. Pretty handy with a net myself. I usually take all their kittens and we TNR the adults, make sure they're healthy, vaccinated. If they're not, we don't release them back out to the public. And that's one way that you're gonna cut down on your population outside. There are sick cats out there. There are parasite-ridden cats. Um, but you also need to think every creature was put here for a purpose. And these cats are keeping your mice and your rat and all that population down. Sorry about your songbirds. I'm not a naturalist. I'm not here for the birds. I'm here for the animals, domesticated animals. Um, and I'm here for the colony caretakers because they do care about these cats. So I hope that you guys go in sensitively and realize that these people, some of them think they're the only ones that can take care of these animals. They're the only ones that care about these animals. They need to know that we are here to help them. We are not against them. I don't think they're the enemy. They're trying to do what's right. And this is all they ever known. And with the history of this town, people are scared to call. Whether the shelter is full or not, people are scared to call law enforcement here when there is a stray. So who do they call? They call me. I take a lot of cats out of your town, which is out of my jurisdiction. I don't have a contract with you. I don't get any money for it. I do it because it's the right thing to do and these animals need help and so do the colony caretakers. So I just hope you guys see the other side of it too. I realize, sorry, your kid got bit. Stuff happens. It, it happens. It's going to happen. But wouldn't you feel better about it if you saw that that cat was ear-nodged, knowing it had gotten a rabies vaccination? Bottom line, there's always gonna be outside cats. You want them healthy and vaccinated, sterilized, not repopulating?
One thing that'll make people that are dubious probably feel better. Did you, when you, and wherever you've, um, TNR programs have gone, have you known what your starting point was and then what your endpoint after a couple of years was?
Absolutely.
So you have, and you could help if we go this route, you could help Jefferson do a head count or a tail count or whatever before and after.
Okay. So that's gonna be really hard, pinpointing it down to a number. We can do an estimate.
Estimate, of course.
Yeah. I mean, we can set, I've set out trail cams to kinda get an idea how many cats are traveling. Because if they're true ferals, you're not even seeing the true ferals.
Well, then another thing is, it could, you know, we do TNR for two years and there's still gonna be cats around. And so someone sees a cat across their yard and they're gonna say, well, there you go. It was a failure. You know, so that we know at least roughly what's
Okay. So you all are politicians to a point. You're never gonna please everybody.
Sure.
Period. Um, so if I look across the street and I see a couple of cats, but I also see that they're ear-tipped, I know that they're already sterilized. Bottom line, once you sterilize a good majority of your colonies, the population is gonna start to die down, especially if we're pulling those kittens out of those colonies, sterilizing the parents, making sure they're healthy, put them back. They're gonna die and they're not gonna have a chance to repopulate at that point. So your goal is 80 to 90% of your colony.
So 80, 90, 80 to 90% of a colony would be true evidence then, because you could see it.
I'm, I'm telling you, after starting TNR in Boone over three years ago, our nuisance calls are almost nothing. Every great once in a while, I'll get a call that there's a cat in my backyard. Oh, is it healthy? Is it injured? Well, no. Okay. Can you tell if it's a male or female? Can you get anywhere near it? Come get a trap from me. Bring me the cat. We evaluate it. If it's not adoptable, we put it back. If it is adoptable, we adopt it out. But there falls back on your local shelter. Your local shelter needs to be able to move these animals out quicker. Our goal is to get TNRs out within two days of my shelter. So I have a vet that supports TNR. That makes all the difference. If your shelter has a good vet that's willing to help, willing to make those appointment times, it helps 100%. If you don't have those resources, it, it's gonna come to a funnel and you're gonna get stuck.
So maybe a solution to that. I saw this on TV. It was in Philadelphia and they had like a mass TNR weekend where they just caught cats right, left and center. Would that maybe work better here? I, I know that, you know, 50 cats have been TNR'd already. I assume that wasn't piecemeal, that that was probably, you know, I don't know if here it would work so well that, you know, oh, we caught one cat today and two cats tomorrow and whatever. Rather than if we talked to the colony people and they helped us catch 20 or 30 cats over a weekend or something, because then vets that would be willing could be around.
I think you need to target your biggest problem areas to start with. That's what we did in Boone. Um, we hit our trailer parks. It's the low poverty level of our community. They couldn't afford to pay $200 a cat to get it fixed at the local vet and they would have never gotten a microchip, an ear tip or vaccinations for that price. So targeting your colonies is where you're gonna see a huge difference. Somebody's neighbor, I believe last time, you maybe? I don't know. Somebody's neighbor was a colony caretaker and was not communicating. They're scared. They're scared that you guys, like you said, are you gonna euthanize their cats? So yeah, approaching them and saying, hey, we wanna help. This is what our plan is. Okay, let's do this. Getting all the traps set on that property, getting all of their cats TNR'd that we can catch at one time. And yeah, there's gonna be a few stragglers. There are cats out there that are scared to go into the trap. But that, that's what drop traps are for. That's what the expertise, you know, will help with, the nets. Um, you have to hit the colonies at a time and I agree with you, one cat here, one cat there, you're not gonna see a difference as quick as you would if you target certain areas. After we hit the trailer park, we decided we're gonna break the town down into different, uh, regions, if you want to call it that. We did four block regions. We would go door to door, talk to those residents as advocates for the cats, not against them, that you're gonna get in trouble because you're feeding 30 cats. We want to help. So we also got their permission at that time to adopt out their friendlier cats, the ones that were trying to get inside their house, all of the kittens, no matter what. Kittens typically six months and under, we take in no matter what, whether they're feral or not. We have a great foster base. And that's another thing that I think your shelter would benefit from is a ton of fosters. Um, there are state codes that have changed. Your shelter was not aware of those state codes. They took effect June 1st. So we are educating. We are working with your shelter. Um, we're here for any questions. I will show up to any meeting. This was a little short notice, but we're here because we care.
Okay. Well, I'd like to kinda wrap this up for discussion now, but I'd like to, if, if you'd be willing to meet with the group uh, at a later date. At committee.
Can I say something, Matt?
Yeah.
Uh, I'll admit, I came in here tonight ready to collect scalps. I mean, from what I read on this thing.
All right.
But this is the most encouraging I've ever heard this group talk about TNR. And I would like to make a suggestion. You're getting a $30,000 gift, but half of that towards the TNR and you'll be well on your way.
Sure.
I grew up in Jefferson. I'm Kathy Cranston. And we had horses, dogs, cats and everything and we were in city limits. But, um, how we got our first cats was we have an apartment house and they would move out, leave their pets. I can't stand to see a pet go hungry, cause they do get sick if you don't feed them.
Sure.
And I'm so thankful for this group because they helped catch our cats that were wild, but we had tame ones too. But even the tame ones caught, you'll think they're wild in a cage.
Yeah.
And I am so thankful that they helped us because we've had cats fixed and the vet here does not work with us. I fixed, I think it was five kitties and over a thousand dollars. And nobody can afford that. And when you get them fixed, they aren't gonna multiply. And I don't know how many snakes and mice that they've caught. Cause they always bring it up to my door and Mark gets to remove them. But we really enjoy them and they're healthy because we do feed them and take care of them. And I'd rather not have them be born than to get hit on the street or die of, uh, disease like, well, and they get what's that disease? Distemper. And distemper will kill them off if they get sick. So I'd rather have them be healthy and not reproducing.
Sure.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hello, everybody here knows I'm Lynn Price and I apologize, last time we met, I was very compassionate, shall we say, and long-winded. But, um, the truth is what Darren said. There has been about 50 cats sterilized in the county, I mean, the city. Of those 50, some 40 of the 50 cats, we had volunteers. We worked with the colony care organist, um, colony caregivers, our organization did. We provided a van to take them to our low-cost clinic in Boone and bring them back. They have been ear-nodded. They have been microchipped. They have been dewormed and defleed. defleed and vaccinated for everything. And I apologize, your child got bit, but here's the problem I have. That probably wasn't a feral cat unless the child had it cornered. The problem we have is that Paws doesn't have a big enough shelter to hold the need that we have in this community. Of the three colonies that we worked with before the funds ran out, one colony had no kittens for the first time in decades. The other colony has had two litters of kittens. One of them has already been caught. The two males were neutered yesterday. The female will be neutered, spayed as soon as she reaches two pounds. They are in foster home. They will be adopted to indoor families. None of us here tonight want to see animals treated cruelly, both sides of the podium here, and I appreciate that. When I first read what was put on the internet, my phone started ringing Sunday night off the hook and it's been ringing ever since. I got to go help with the neglect case in one of our rural communities now. But the truth of the matter is, is that with zero population growth in the one colony, we got 100%. The other colony, we got 100% is west of Main Street there, or Elm Street. They've seen one kitten in the whole neighborhood. The other colony that we only got 80% of, like I said, they got two litters. We already caught one litter. They think the other litter belongs at their neighbor down the road. But we're working with the neighbor as well to get those kittens caught so they can be rehomed and out of town. Spoke to Darren before about the cats that used to be at Twin Shop. There was a lot of people thinking, well, because Twin Shop closed over the winter time, they must have went away because we're not feeding anymore. They will not go away. They will just get more desperate to find food from other sources. The cats from Twin Shops, we were able to find homes for the little ones and farm homes for the other ones. But when we do farm homes, we require them to allow one of our volunteers to inspect their farm, to make sure the animal is going to have proper food and water that's not going to freeze and that they can find the animal for at least two weeks so the animal knows where home is so they don't try to wander off and get bitten off by coyotes. So we ran out of funds to be able to help these colony care providers. Yes, sir.
What was your cost per cat approximately?
We had volunteers meeting people with the traps, myself, some people from Paws, some good Samaritans, my son. We would take them over to Boone, have them done at our clinic. A trap neuter return cat, a wild cat, is 55 for males, 65 for females. That includes your rabies, your distemper, your microchip, your revolution, which takes care of fleas, termites, worms and hookworms. All of that for 55 and 65. The problem is with COVID hitting some grants that we normally get, they didn't offer any funds to anyone. So, you know, somebody, since we've been here, sent me a text and said, hey, they just got that $30,000 of free money. We estimate we have over a fourth of the animals that we know of known colonies already fixed in Jefferson, maybe a third, maybe more than a third. I'm sure as soon as you guys, if you would endorse allowing us the continually trap neuter return efforts, that more people will come out of the woodwork that's feeding cats. And our estimates would go up. But we estimate anywhere from at least another 150 to 200 cats not fixed that we know of in known colonies.
Well, once again, this is just my opinion, but I mean, to endorse you guys doing this, that's free money too. I mean, you know, that's maybe not fair. And I would, I would look to some other funds too, especially to euthanize a cat, you know, with this is $150.
And keep in mind...
I mean, then, you know, we would say, that cat's still on the loose, but...
And that's just it, we microchip everything. We offer low cost spending neutering to the general public. So if you're not doing three or more cats or if you're not doing a feral cat, we'll do that for $80 for a female and 65 for a male. Sometimes we'll get grants and we'll be able to take an extra $30 off if they slip me their food stamp card. The person in the next line doesn't know, but if they're low income, well, then we'll give another $30. But we don't have those grants right now. But it's cheaper to do it this way. You have zero population growth and eventually they'll die off of natural causes. The problem that's concerning to me when we first read it was the idea of people. And it's not because they're reviewing the cats. It's because I was in the United States Army for three years and I did bite reports. Nothing is worse than having to interview a little kid in the emergency room with a bite from a cat and you don't know if you're going to catch it or not. Because you don't want that kid to go through rabies shots. I don't want to see citizens trapping any animals. The city of Ames actually has ordinances that you have to have a permit to be able to trap. And if you trap the animal that you weren't intending to trap, you have to release it on the spot. And there's a gentleman in this room, and I'm sure I'm not going to say his name, but he has a drop trap in his backyard right now. And everybody in the neighborhood that I know is going over there and setting it off so he doesn't get a cat. And I have no idea what that gentleman is doing with animals when he catches them in that drop trap on the other side of their neighbor's privacy fence. I'm scared that person is a vigilante and he's either dumping them or taking them out and having somebody shoot them. All the area shelters are full. I mean, when we have a situation, we call Boone, we call Tom. Everybody's just like, we're out of resources, we're full. Well, supervisors have an issue right now with a vicious dog that Mark doesn't want to have the quarantine through the whole appeals process. So somebody called me and said, hey, make some calls, see if you can find somebody that would be willing to quarantine this dog until the appeals process is over. All the shelters I reached out to also, that they were full. They don't have the facilities large enough. Our community's facility is zillion times smaller than theirs. You know, you got this $30,000 of free money if you could expect it and put some of it into helping. Our organization would be willing to do a microchip clinic for cost, which is $15 with lifetime registration. I personally, as a licensed vet tech, will donate three hours of my time every other Saturday for the next three months. If we could get the city to encourage people to microchip their house pet, because I tell you what, the ladies back here from Paws, they'll tell you when they had it microchipped and they see it's one of our organizations, they're like, Lynn, let us know right away. I mean, they text me at work. Look it up, get them. That animal pays their bond and their home that night. Microchipping is a great way of identifying both dogs and cats to get them moved out of the shelter faster. Is there any questions from you all? Yes, sir. No, I don't. I'm just teasing.
That's intended strictly for the airport, with the grant to the airport.
Okay, I was just joking. Somebody sent me that. Yeah, it's all good. But like Darren said, it's cheaper to go this route and stop the population growth than it would be to have him euthanized. Are there any other questions?
I guess I would say too, the two cats I have are microchipped and I would rather, I said before, I'd rather, they are starting to get out more without my intention. They're completely house cats, but they're starting to dart. Well, I would much rather pay a $25 fine or even more than to never know what happened to them again, if they did get out.
May I ask Darren a question? When we spoke on the phone months ago, didn't you say that somewhere in your neighborhood there was a family that thought it was funny to let their house cat out and get pregnant?
Well...
I'm sorry, they put you in the hot seat.
That's, yeah, I don't know if I should maybe...
I'm sorry to put you in the hot seat. But like, west of the, not his neighborhood, but west of the high school, there is a lady that has expressed concern to us about their neighbor's house cat keep getting out. It's a purebred Siamese male. Well, guess what we fixed today? Four kittens from Jefferson that look like Siamese crosses. They're going to be available for adoption next week. So blue eyed, beautiful, but so there's no population growth, but we still have to address the irresponsible owners that are allowing their own privately owned pets to be free roamed. And when they get scared, they bite the mayor's kid. Any other questions?
Nope, thank you. All right. Discussion.
Hi, I'm Carla Robinson. Worried about these vigilantes? I stopped at my brother's house last night. My mother had fed these feral cats for probably many, many decades. Mama passed on. His cats turned up gone. Last night, the black one came back. I'll bet it doesn't weigh seven pounds. Somebody had it trapped someplace, trying to starve it. One of its legs in real bad shape. They are ferals. You cannot touch them. They know that's where you go for food. It's sad, there's a lot of sick people out there. I do hope you figure out some way, but we just can't shoot cats. My last cat was a foundling, well, foundling. I was going for campaign for one of the presidents. Somebody had dumped it out in Cooper. Well, big boy Holyfield now has a home and he's very spoiled. He's missing an ear. I assume Mike Tyson bit it off. But these cats, it was not fair because it's friendly, but they can be taken care of, honestly. And if somebody will neuter them at a decent price, and I know that they've got to make some money at the vets because you got to pay for the lights, electricity, the new building, you've got to pay for your assistance. But I do hope we can figure out something. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on. All right, we'll take one more.
I'm one of those nefarious people that feeds stray cats. Now, the reason I started this was someone was missing a yellow cat. It was lost about two blocks from my home. And a stray skinny yellow cat showed up at my house. Couldn't get close to it, so I put out food. And it hung out for a little while, but I still never could get close to it. But in the meantime, other stray cats showed up. They were not in real good shape either. I didn't have the heart to pull the food. Maybe I should have, but I couldn't. One of the little torties that showed up had kittens. One of the kittens, a yellow one, I got ahold of once. It was kind of spitty and hissy. I tried to take it to Paws, but they weren't going to work with it. So I let it go. I couldn't bring it in the house because I live with my mother and my mother really couldn't have cats in the house. Well, to make a long story short, the majority of the cats that I now feed are her descendants. Had the trap neuter and release program been in place at that time, I would not have the situation I'm in. So not only do you have to get one started, you have to continually fund it. It has to be a year long and an ongoing process. It'll probably cost a lot to begin with. But then as the cats die off, it will be fewer and fewer. I don't care to see neighborhood justice for the cats. I had one cat, a kitten, it had been around a while. And it disappeared for a couple of days and it showed back up, not being able to walk. Its rear leg had been pulled out of its socket. There were no signs that a dog had gotten hold of it. And I know there was a neighbor that particularly disliked cats and I suspected it probably the neighbor probably got ahold of the cat. So please do not turn this over to the public as trapping. It kind of sounded like it was going to be a free for all. But please, please, please consider establishing and continuing a trap neuter and release program. Because like I said, the majority of the cats in my neighborhood are her, that single cats descendants. Thank you for your time.
So if an organization that was in favor of TNR came to you, you would help...
You're darn right, I'd help.
Catch any of the cats you could catch by hand and then let them put traps on your property?
I already have. Apes has helped me considerably. I brought the cats in that I could get by hand. We trapped several of them. And there was a few that we missed and I do know they showed up pregnant in the spring. I haven't seen kittens and I'm thinking maybe the kittens didn't live. But you're darn right, I would. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the report section. Jim, you got anything?
As far as ongoing projects go, Chestnut Water Main, the main lines are in. They're working on installing hydrants and making connections. The trails project has started on Central Avenue with the excavation. Road relocation at the airport is essentially complete. And the runway extension, we are currently waiting for the grants from the FAA and then we can proceed with contracts and bonds with the contractor.
Thank you. Mike?
The good news, the Red Creek River gave in Monday morning for a study. They are going to be redoing sections between Colonel and Seaver Street. The good news is they're going to redo all the intersections nice and smooth. There'll be some temporary closures and things, they do it by week. So the rest of the process is going to be a little bit easier.
All right, Bob?
No report.
Sam?
No report.
Dave?
One, two quick things. We are meeting with Main Street Chamber tomorrow. I think it's from out in the nick at 5:00 to go over how they want to proceed with their merger. Also, next Monday, I am meeting with Don Oris. We've had to revamp our animal shelter proposal just a little bit. And that's what we're going to go over, see where we're standing on that and keep rolling on that.
Thank you. Pat? Darren?
Library met last night. They're dealing with COVID, I guess, like the rest of us. Some of their plans are, and they're already doing some of the summer things, they're doing it over Zoom or having things like that. Right now, they have the children's section closed, but they have children's books in the adult section. And I think their circulation is pretty good considering.
Good. Matt?
No report.
Harry?
No report.
No report. Ah, leaves just me. So we did meet on the police department and, you know, just discussing that noise ordinance. And I think we had good conversations there and got some good things worked out. And we're going to have two more readings on it at the next couple of council meetings. So if you're hearing anything, please pass it along. Invite them to come up and talk because I want to make sure that we iron out as much as possible on that, which I think, you know, I feel like we're there. We've had a lot of good discussions and we're getting there. You know, still continuing on the Midland power move with the sheriff's office, just kind of gathering information and moving forward on that, but not really a lot to report on it. It's a really nice building. And we have Officer Walterman doing really good in his training. And we are, just so the council knows, we are taking a look at a UTV ordinance, maybe to kind of tag along with our golf cart ordinance to allow like side by sides, razors, things of that nature, for people to haul brush and things like that. Road legal UTV, so not like your straddle style four wheelers or three wheelers, not like that. Same rules would apply, imagine you need... Same rules would apply, imagine, you need to have, be a valid driver's license, and I don't currently know if we charge any kind of a fee for a permit or anything like that each year, but it's just something that we're exploring. There's been some people in the public that were wondering if that's a possibility, and just kind of looking at what other people are, have out there for similar ordinances, and if we can come to something that makes sense, then we'll be bringing that to you in the next couple of months, probably. Anybody have any questions, anything? Any questions? All right, we're adjourned.